Good morning and welcome to our August 21st, 2018 Board of Commissioners meeting. First, I'd like to mention Chairman Page will not be with us today. He has a prior obligation he's attending to. So I'd like to ask Commissioner Daughery to lead us in the invocation.
Let's all bow our heads. Lord, may your goodness and love be present amongst us today. Come bless us with unity, hope, and vision. Lord, we pray for unity, building us all a deep respect for one another. Lord, we pray for hope. Come stir your hope within our hearts and renew our faith. Bring hope for healing for all those who are ailing. Lord, we pray for vision. May your vision fill our lives as we seek to improve the lives of the citizens of Wayne County. We ask all of this in the glorious name of Jesus. Amen.
Commissioner Cromarty?
Please stand. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of August 7, 2018.
Stand up.
The motion, any discussion? All in favor, please, six, five, raise your right hand. Mr. Henke, any discussion or adjustment of the agenda?
Yes, sir. We would like to have a resolution on new business. It's Resolution 2018-24. This resolution is in support of the county submitting a request for the Rural Ready Site Grant, and this will be for the Goldsboro Industrial Campus for site development and for the grant application for that.
Okay, so that'd be number six.
Yes, sir.
Does any commissioner have anything to add or discussion to this agenda? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion made, any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, please, six, five, raise your right hand. The next, I have a special presentation recognizing Mr. Fred Fontana. I ask Commissioner Daughery to lead us down and for the presentation.
We'll all come down here. We've got somebody we want to honor today. (laughter) (inaudible) I'm going to let you stand over here. We want to get some words of wisdom from you today. Fred, years ago, Wayne County was faced with a dilemma here in our county with our transportation system, and we reached out and found you. And you came to help us, and you've just done a marvelous job of reorganizing GWTA. I've had four years to learn that, and I've had a hard time getting it, but the old gateway, and you've reidentified that entire program, and it's just been a blessing to Wayne County and to a lot of citizens. And so we wanted to honor you today as you retire and present you with the key to Wayne County.
Wow.
Now, I asked about this key, and they said it was a big lot, but it fits Wayne County. So you've now got a key to Wayne County. Presented to Fred Fontana in recognition of excellence in leadership and service, we appreciate your humble and dedicated commitment to GWTA and the County of Wayne. The Wayne County Board of Commissioners, Goldsboro North County, on August 21st of 2018.
Well, thank you.
Thank you so much. Speaker, do you work for it?
Thank you. I've never been given the key to anything other than my house, but this is great. Most of the commissioners have been on our GWTA board at one time or the other and have been very supportive. I really could not have been as successful without the support of the county commissioners, the city council from the city of Goldsboro, and excellent staff. You know, I think it didn't take just one person making it successful, and I thank you. Don Willis is here. You're all going to be in able hands with him, so I am off, as they say, to the sunset or to the east. And I was real tempted to come wearing my beach attire, but I said, "I better not just yet." So thank you very much.
(applause) Fred, you will. Come up here and get a picture with them. We generally charge $30,000 for these pictures, but today it's going to be $100,000. Thank you, Fred.
Thank you.
to step before us and give us four minutes of wisdom, we appreciate it.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
How are y'all? It is always good to come to see you. I'm Lynn Williams from Mount Olive, and I'm here to talk this morning about Southern Wayne. So, my son graduated from Southern Wayne in 2009 and my daughter in 2016. I was part of the Booster Group of Parents that reorganized and re-energized the Booster Club, beginning with my daughter's freshman year. In the past five years, we have put back between $30,000 and $40,000 a year to support Southern Wayne athletes in our facilities. That represents a whole lot of barbecue plate and reverse barbecue tickets and hot dogs and candy. But we quickly realized, once we got there, that Southern Wayne's athletic program needed far more than hot dogs and popcorn could provide. Years of poor maintenance and outright neglect of not making improvements to the facilities as you go along left its mark. Our gym is 50 years old, over 50 years old. The public restrooms facilities are tiny and ancient. The bleachers are original, no handrails, no steps. We actually now have more indoor teams than we have space to practice. My daughter played volleyball for all four years. Visiting teams don't use our facilities. My daughter also played two years of softball. She kept her ball bag in a storage closet in the art room, and that's where she dressed for games, because there are no locker room facilities for female athletes and outdoor sports. They prefer for games in restrooms, classrooms, closets, their cars. That's why we began lobbying for a new gym with sufficient locker rooms and support spaces for all of the athletic programs at Southern Wayne. We need facilities, a school that students can be proud of in this community. We also need permanent classrooms to replace the six temporary classrooms that have been there for 30 years. It makes sense to us to go ahead and address all these things while we are at it. Experience has proven that it might be decades before we get another opportunity, and we've been patient. We've waited as you built badly needed classrooms and new schools elsewhere in the county. We understand that. We recognize that you, as county commissioners, have pressing issues to address beyond schools, but we believe the time has finally come to address Southern Wayne, both classrooms and the gym. We have our challenges facilities-wise. We have our challenges academically. We are tremendously grateful to the current Wayne County Schools Administration, which has demonstrated a genuine commitment to ensuring that Southern Wayne has the resources, the support, and the strong school leadership it needs to do its job effectively. We have a long way to go, but it has been a deeply refreshing change. A strong Southern Wayne High School is absolutely vital to the economic well-being of Southern Wayne County. We have seen a decline in the numbers of parents who choose to send their children to Southern Wayne, and we have lost untold numbers of new families who have chosen to live elsewhere because they didn't want to live in Southern Wayne's district. We are asking you to join us, to help us, to make an investment in Southern Wayne. It's a worthy investment, and it's one that we believe is desperately needed. And I'll take 30 seconds, too, on high school sports and the importance of it. How many of you have all played high school sports? Imagine what your school light years would have been like without it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Darren Flowers from Fremont. I want to endorse what we're just saying, but I want to put a caveat to it. Fremont has been on the list for additional classrooms since the readjustment of priorities for schools. We favor growth everywhere, but not at the expense of Fremont program. If there is a decision made, let's make it for the benefit of all the children of Wayne County. And I certainly, as I say, I certainly endorse the Southern Wayne need for a gym, but not if the rumor has been that it was going to be at the expense of the Fremont classrooms. If that is the fact, then we think your priority's in the wrong place. Classrooms should come first. Thank you.
My name is Barry Merrill. I live at 432 Club Knolls Road in Dudley. Gentlemen, we're here to tell you from Southern Wayne that we have a credibility problem. You and I are asking the voters of Wayne County to support the sales tax increase, and you tell us that you need that to fund school facility needs. Our question is, whose school facility needs will you use that money for once you get our vote and our money? Southern Wayne, Southern Wayne are Tier One schools. It has been 40 years since there has been any significant investment in the largest high school in the county, which, while the Tier One schools across the county have had new schools and new classroom wings built, the schools in Seven Springs and in Grantham and in Rosewood and in Northern Wayne. Even now, we hear from you how we have to replace temporary mobile classrooms at Tommy's Road and Northwest. Those schools didn't exist when temporary mobile classrooms were drug onto Southern Wayne. Three years ago, our county commissioner, Ed Cromarty, reminded you and the school board that they have never made good on their promise when they put in gyms at Acock and Rosewood to put a second gym in at Southern Wayne. Three months ago, several of you went to Southern Wayne to tell the parents, "You don't have enough money to build that promised gym and the classrooms." And you asked, "Which one did they want?" They told you clearly they wanted the gym and a full competition gym. You told them you didn't have the money. Well, a month later, some of us got on the phone, and we talked to our state legislators, and you got $2.2 million more for your budget. And what did you do? We need to go back and re-figure our budget. We're not going to spend that money at Southern Wayne. Two weeks ago, the superintendent and the county manager and some of you and the school board chairman sat down, and they went over the money for facilities. And they told you, "We've got the $5.3 million." The schools said that they would take the money out of their fund balance to complete the project if necessary. What did you say? "We're not going to spend all that money at Southern Wayne." We don't want to, excuse me, Southern Wayne, gentlemen, if you want, if you are asking Southern Wayne to vote a sales tax increase, commit to build our new, excuse me, commit to build our promised gym now and replace our temporary trailer, excuse me, once you get your sales tax increase within the five years. We think that's appropriate. Make a decision. Give us a reason to believe you that you will spend the money in Southern Wayne County and not give us another empty promise for 18 years that we'll get to you when we get to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning, gentlemen. My name is Joe Scott, and I represent Mount Olive in the southern end of the county. And where I stand, I am in the southern end of the county. I'm not on the southeast or southwest side. What has been said here has been a lot of emotion this morning. For 17, 18 years, Southern Wayne has been on a roller coaster ride. We've had our hopes built up, and then we've had them destroyed. I am a father of three sons who graduated from Southern Wayne. I could have chosen to send them to St. Mary's or to Wayne Country Day, but I chose to, my sons, to go to the school in the community they live in. They got a great education. They got grants to go to college, and the school there today is a good school. We have a good principal. Mr. Kevin Smith Hart is in that school. He's hired teachers who now have degrees to teach in the field that they are hired in, which is something we hadn't had in a long time. Speaking of building gyms and classrooms, this has been an up and down subject for a long time. I trust you, gentlemen, in your decisions. I work with all of you. I've met you. You're my friends. You have hired a gentleman that's a county manager. I trust him also. The Board of Education has hired a school superintendent that I trust. Let's get them together to come up with a compromise that will satisfy us and help us in the southern end of Wayne County. I want to tell you, it is a school that covers the quarter of this county, the largest high school in the county. It's a diverse school. It has a third Hispanic, a third African American, and a third white. When they walk through those doors going to school, we have some students that live in million dollar homes. We have other students that live in garages, but yet they're united together as a community, and we want to support those children. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else? Seeing none, one public comments section is closed. So now we have our public hearing on the Canterbury and North Creek subdivision, and Staff Attorney Andrew Nivel will be with us.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Before we got started, I thought, we've gotten some calls over the last week or so regarding the process, so I thought it would be good just to have a quick presentation to answer any questions about the assessments moving forward. Just the action to date, to recap, the NC DOT Board of Transportation accepted the roads into the system on August 2nd. I can provide an update. I checked as recently as yesterday, and they actually are in the online database and have been assigned numbers, so that whole process has taken place. On August 7th, you formally declared the cost and then accepted the preliminary roll, and the public hearing was set for today. Following that hearing, we ran an advertisement in the News Argus, and all affected property owners were mailed notice of the hearing today. Just a quick summary of the cost, because we did get a couple of questions about that. Total cost, which was declared by the board, was $1,921,405.04. Total assessment per lot is $15,879.38, and I'll get into a little bit about how that can be paid. It can be paid in a lump sum or over 10 years. The basis of our assessment was the number of buildable lots as of the passage of your initial resolution in 2016. That was August 16, 2016. At the time, there were 121 buildable lots. There have been some property transfers and combinations, but the basis is 121 lots. Additionally, the project completed, this project significantly under budget. The previous estimate by previous county manager George Wood in August 10 of 2016 was $2,199,456, or approximately about $18,000 per buildable lot. We actually got that down, obviously, to about $15,000. I would like to point out that originally, this project was going to be managed by the Department of Transportation. Their approximate cost were about $3 million. That would have been about $24,000 a buildable lot. So we have saved quite a bit of money, about $9,000 for each affected property owner. So the timeline for the property owners moving forward, today we have our public hearing. Anybody who wants to speak can speak during the public hearing. Assuming the board actually confirms the role today, then September 10, 2018, so 20 days from confirmation today, the tax office will publish a notice notifying that the role has been confirmed, the assessment role has been confirmed. The notice will notify property owners that if they pay in full within 30 days, no interest will be added on their assessments. Also, at that same time, the Wayne County Finance Office will mail invoices to all property owners with information on where to send their payments. The last day to pay to avoid any interest would be August 10 of this year. So if any affected property owners want to pay, that must be done by October 10. October 11, that's when the interest is going to run. Now, we've actually communicated a little bit amongst the staff and our financial advisor, and interest for this year is going to run as of October 11. So the 5% interest is going to run as of October 11. So your interest payment, if you're paying in installments for this year, is going to be significantly cheaper. Obviously, next year is going to have one year of interest, so it's going to be higher, but we're going to run that as of October 11. The tax office has already begun processing the bills. They're actually already online, so we could not get these payments out with the tax bills. So this year's payments have to be made to the Wayne County Finance Office. If you call the county manager's office, they can provide information, but those payments can be mailed to P.O. Box 227, Goldsboro, 27533. Again, the finance office will mail out all these invoices so someone has a document that they can provide payment with. That's actually going to be January 7, 2019. The resolution is going to state that the assessments are due on January 6. However, January 6 is a weekend, so January 7 is the last day to pay your first year. So all subsequent installment payments will be collected as part of the annual tax bill. So when you get your tax bill in August or September, it's going to include your assessment payment on there. There's 5% interest on each payment. We do have some very rough numbers. If affected property owners are interested in the payments, we've worked with our financial advisors. We can give them an idea of ballpark what the interest might be if they're interested. Payments will be due on January 6 of each year. If January 6 falls on a holiday or weekend, payments due the following day. It's the same procedure that the tax office goes through if the 6 is on a weekend or on a holiday. Property owners may prepay all or any portion of the assessment at any time outside the 30 days. So two or three years from now, if a property owner has some extra money and wants to go ahead and get this taken care of, they can. That payment has to be made to the finance office, cannot be paid to the tax office, and that's my next note. The tax office will only collect the individual year that's been provided them to the finance office. So if you go, if you take a check for $10,000 to the tax office, they're only going to be able to collect what's in their system for that one year. So any prepayments or additional payments must be made to the finance office. If any affected property owner needs a balance, they can call the county manager's office and get that information. And then the final resolution, assuming this role is finalized and confirmed today, will be recorded with the registered deeds. I say that only because when people are buying property, obviously, they need to have noticed that some of these liens are out there. So every affected property owner will be registered in the registered deeds. This resolution will go in. So anyone who's buying property has those concerns. It should show up in the title work when the attorney goes for closings. So I'll take any questions, but I think the majority of questions we've gotten so far is just, "What's the timeline? What days do I need to pay?" So I wanted to make sure we laid those out for everybody.
Ms. Mayor?
Andrew, I've been asked by several residents, "Is there a way we can get some kind of interest, total interest that will be paid over this 10-year period?"
Yes, we can.
Do you have a spot? I think you may have mentioned in your presentation.
We can. We've actually been working with our financial advisor, who helped us take out the debt for this project, and they've given us a schedule of the total amount of interest that'll be paid over the 10 years if the property owners choose to go that route. We have those numbers.
Okay. Secondly, Ms. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Secondly, I've also been contacted by several residents about exposed cables, things of that nature, washouts around driveway tiles, some work that was not done or needs to be done. Am I correct in saying that at this point, those residents have to call DOT for those repairs? Am I correct?
Yes, sir. I had heard something about cables. My understanding, those may be Spectrum or a utility provider.
I have pictures.
We can certainly follow up on that.
I have pictures, and of course, I got together with Chip, I believe, right, Chip? We have addressed that, and I want the public to know that basically from this point forward, you have to call the DOT for any repairs, even though there may be some repairs needed now. Is that correct, Mr. County Manager?
We will try to help on some of those existing utility lines like we have, you know, in the short term. However, long term, it is the responsibility of either DOT or the private property owner.
Okay.
But in the short term, we have tried to help. We've had a good relationship with Spectrum and also with D to get those things done, so.
Okay.
That's all I have. I do have a couple of revisions to the role that was adopted. We actually created this role based off the mapping system. A lot of times, they use abbreviations for names and things like that. Just real quickly, my office went through and verified all the deeds. We found eight entries, and I have updated versions of this, but I would just ask as part of this confirmation that we amend role numbers 12, 24, 31, 36, 50, 89, 120, and 121. And the majority of those, there's two actually that we removed or completely modified property owner because the mapping system was incorrect, but the majority of them are just typos in the names that we just need to fix. the names that we just need to fix. So if the board does move for confirmation today, I'd just ask that we adopt those eight revisions to the role. Thank you.
Anyone wish to speak?
I live at 102 Helms Court, Goldsboro, North Carolina. You know phone number? Okay. Commissioners, I've been up here several times before to speak about the project we've undergone, and, you know, I haven't changed my mind. I'm still absolutely pleased with the project. I know a lot of people have a lot of different opinions about it, but I'm telling you, it would not have happened any other way without your help. It was a huge project, a lot of complexities to it. It's a bigger project than I think most property owners realize, you know, they could take on themselves, you know, without the backing and the help of Wayne County and the commissioners. So, you know, I'd like to thank you again, and I'm very pleased that, you know, this is, it's all over, and we're going to be able to drive through our neighborhood this winter. First time in a decade, we're not going to have huge potholes to drive through, so very pleased about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If I can point out, I think that gentleman needs an attaboy because he took on this project and really just shows how a community can come together with spearheaded with some leadership, and I commend your job for that.
And then some.
And then some.
Attaboy, and then some.
That's right.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Well, one thing I'd like to say, I would not want to overlook, my colleague to my left, he has done the job for his district that we all expect to do for our districts, respectively, and whatever the projects are. So we work as a countywide group, but Mr. Mayle would be congratulated for keeping his constituency informed and to advocate.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I also like to put a lot of credit where credit's due. Mr. George Wood had a lot to do with this, because if the truth is known, it probably wouldn't have happened if George Wood hadn't been here, because we did not want to take this project on. So let's, let's give Mr. Wood a whole lot of credit, because he, he's actually the one who made it happen.
And if we're giving out attaboys, I do want to give a huge attaboy to Kendall Lee, Ryan Preble, and also Chip for the work. You know, we kind of took it up, tried to manage it. At the end, Kendall saved this project about $110,000 of change order from Duke. So Kendall really came up and had a different way of doing things that Duke accepted, and it really saved this project from, you know, as many change orders as we've had in the past. So I do want to thank our staff as well.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I agree with everything that's said. I remember back when George Wood and I were talking one day, and he asked me, he said, Brayley said, if you, what's in your district? What's priority on your list at this time? I said, the streets and the subdivisions in my district, because it's the growth part of the county. We've got potholes that motorcycles can't get through. And I said, what can we do? The county can't fund it, and we're not responsible, we don't own the roads in Wayne County, what do we do? And he thought for a minute, and he says, hey, have you ever thought about using the state statutes to do that through the commission? And that's how that started, was just from a conversation that ultimately ended up. But I do, I do like to thank Steve Cole and others, because they actually kept this, the citizens informed. I'm on, yeah, that's correct. They actually kept the citizens informed as to a lot of the progress. I would send some stuff to Steve, and he would share. But the key is, is that it's done, finally. This is our first one. And what I'd like to say is, and sort of piggyback on what Commissioner Carmody said, is that we need this in every district in Wayne County. There's a need for road repairs, in subdivisions and in mobile home parks, wherever. So overall, I rode down April Lane quite a few times since it's been paid. Boy, it rides good. And so thanks to the commissioners and everyone that's concerned, this is the last official thing that we need to do. This project is officially finished. Is that correct, Andrew?
Once you confirm the role, yes.
Yeah, once we, once we confirm it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
My name's Scott Glasgow, live on 113 East April Lane, and I'd like to just thank Steve for leading that too. He did a great job communicating, we had an email chain that went out and kept everybody informed of what's going on. If I had to go back and look at things that I would like to know that I don't, that I know now that I didn't know then, the communications were great, the process put before us by George went really well. Some of the details in the beginning, when we had a group meeting last, last year, a community meeting on some of the, how things were going to get done and presented, some of that stuff is new to us because of the details behind the contracts that happen between SEPI and whatever. But, so thank you for getting the money from 3,000, $3 million down to 1.9. That was good. If I were to say from a homeowner, from being on site from the whole year, what I observed would be, like my company, what they do is they go in and look at the biggest expense that you have and see how you knock that down if you want to get an expense down. They look the biggest portion first, whatever the biggest portion of the pie is, and see how you can knock that down. The biggest thing I saw in the midst of that was probably the change order you mentioned a while ago that we didn't know much about. We saw it happen, but we didn't know much about it, the power lines. So it's sort of like, we asked for copies of the contract in the beginning, which is hard to give when you're getting bids. We have people that would review things like that. If you were going to pay $20,000 out of your pocket at your home, you'd probably read that contract if you were given to, given it. But we weren't able to get that. So some people that would have a really good detail out might have caught that, and whereas we're left with SEPI trying to catch it, which you would think a company is complicated and good at engineering, wouldn't miss that about the power lines. So that's probably the big one, because that delay from a month and a half or two months on the power lines was pretty huge. So if we had an improvement process going forward, you'd think that would be at the top, because we're, to this day, we probably wouldn't know what they added to the 1.9 was because of that. Probably don't have a way to find out. But for the next people, they might not have $16,000 a piece to pay to get the roads improved. So if we can get that, that number down even more, watching things like that, I think it'd be really good. Anyway, it's a great project, the roads are awesome, and thanks for everybody's help.
If there's no others, this public hearing is closed. Do we need to take any action on this?
We got it on a consent.
It's on a consent, yes, sir. Our next public hearing is the project box. Mr. Creech will come forward.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Tiffany Creech, and I'm the existing industry manager with the Wayne County Development Alliance. And as you may know, my role as existing industry manager, it's my main job to do what I can to assist our existing industries here in Wayne County with their growth and expansion plans, which I take very seriously and I think is very, very important. So it's my role to help those manufacturers, wholesalers, distributors, machine shops to grow and expand right here in Wayne County. So as existing industry manager, I'm coming before you today on behalf of one of our Wayne County industries, Case Farms Processing Incorporated. They are located at 330 Pecan Road in Dudley, and they are a poultry processing operation with separate parfry and marinating divisions as well. Case Farms has been in business in Wayne County since 1995, and they have over 1,000 employees. So Case Farm is planning to build a $5.9 million wastewater treatment facility on their property on Pecan Road in Dudley to increase their wastewater treatment capacity. In addition, they are also planning to build a $43 million freezer expansion that will be added on to their current facility. This will mean new capital investment and new tax base to Wayne County of over $32 million in real property and almost $17 million in machinery and equipment. So this taxable investment in Wayne County will be close to $49 million in total. Case Farms is also planning to create 44 new jobs at an average annual wage of over So the reason I'm coming before you today is to request approval of an incentive grant for Case Farms under our Wayne County industry incentive policy. So if you remember, this policy was adopted back in 2015 in order to encourage industry growth and expansion right here in Wayne County. Because after all, some of these larger industries like Case Farms, they have the option to expand and, you know, build these, these things at any of their other locations outside of this area. So according to our local incentive policy, Case Farms would qualify for a Level 4 or a 95% cash grant back of their paid property taxes over a five-year period. Of course, that would be once the project is complete and once they have paid their property taxes. So of the $49 million estimated investment, the qualifying amount for this project after depreciation is $44,302,000. That amount multiplied by the current tax rate and multiplied by the Level 4 percentage of 95% would result in an estimated yearly incentive amount of 700, I'm sorry, $279,000 over a five-year period. So the total investment for this project over a five-year period would be $1,396,000. But please keep in mind, these are estimates, and they're only estimates, and they'll be adjusted up or down once their actual investment is verified with the tax office. Also, keep in mind that over a 10-year period, the company will still pay to the county an estimated $1.3 million in Wayne County taxes because of this investment. So as of, so today, on behalf of Case Farms Processing Incorporated, I'm requesting you approve this incentive agreement to grant back a portion of their paid property taxes over a five-year period in the amount, in the amount of $279,000 per year. Thank you.
Anyone from the audience wish to speak?
Twice in one day?
Good morning. I wear several hats in this county. My name is Joe Scott. I am chairman of the Wayne County Development Alliance. And if I was a weatherman, the forecast is the weather looks good for Wayne County when it comes to economic development. And as I stand here today with Ms. Creech, we have a lot going on in this county, and we appreciate the support that our county commissioners give us. This 5% matching, to match this grant is really important for this company, and we asked you to please support us in helping Wayne County grow. As you know, we have a new economic development director. We're excited that Mark Pope has decided to come to Wayne County to work, and we appreciate he doing that, and also, we appreciate that bringing Mark will help us to be competitive in the southeastern part of North Carolina. As I say, Wayne County is the heartbeat of eastern North Carolina. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Can I make one more comment? Just wanted to let you know, we always have to be cognizant of the fact that, you know, any kind of development that we have in and around Wayne County, we don't want to encroach on the base. But because of Case Farms' location, it, some of their property is actually in the flight path of Seymour Johnson Air Force Base, but we have, of course, or they have actually shown this project, this expansion project for the freezer and the wastewater treatment plant, they've shown the plans to the base, and the base doesn't have any problems with, with this addition to their facility. So that's all clear there.
Anyone else? Now the comments, closed the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Doughty.
Would you take some action on this?
Yes.
Yes. I move that we accept the recommendation of the incentive package for Case Farm to, and their expansion.
Motion's been made, any discussion, Ms. Moore?
I just want to thank Tiffany and her group. Been a little shakeup in that department, but they've moved forward and done a fantastic job, and I just want to thank that group for, for what they've done to, for this project and other projects that they're working on.
All right, no more discussion. I ask for approval by, raise your right hand.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I do want to echo what Wayne said, and do want to thank Tiffany for the incredible work she's done in the last three, four months, and the work she does as existing industry director, but also serving in the interim role, and she did an outstanding job. And I also want to thank Mayor Scott and the WCDAs board, because we have put a lot of time, a lot of effort in the process and interviewing and revamping the way we do economic development here in Wayne County, and I do want to thank the mayor publicly for that as well, and also appreciate Chairman Doughty and, Commissioner Doughty and Chairman Page for their work as well on that.
All right, no other comments. We'll move to consent agenda, any questions or comments on that before we ask for motion for approval?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Motion's made, any discussion? All in favor, please, if I raise your right hand. Thank you. Next, move on to new business. That'll be a presentation from Mel Powers on the animal control ordinance changes.
Good morning, gentlemen. What you should have, which this has been a long time coming, is the new animal control ordinances that we're bringing to you for adoption. And what we've done is, there's been some revisions. We did a bullet list for you guys, so you wouldn't have to really go through all of it, you can look at the bullet list. Most of the changes that you're going to find are really penalty changes. We did make a few additions to some definitions, but a lot of it is penalty-based. So instead of just, the previous was just a civil penalty, now we're going to civil and/or criminal penalties in our animal control ordinances. So that's what you'll see, most of the changes. Andrew Neal, staff attorney, did the review and made most of those changes and outlines for us on that. And we ask that you approve the ordinance as it is written.
Any questions or comments?
Can you give us, if I might, can you give us an idea in regards to the criminal penalties that have been included here?
Andrew, would you like to just say? So previously, as it was written, it was just civil citations, so they would receive a fine if there was any violation. The way, after working with Mr. Honeycutt and also Mr. Powers, they expressed their concerns that most of the time, the citations just aren't paid and they're really not enforceable. Under North Carolina general statutes, a violation of a local ordinance is actually a class 3 misdemeanor. a Class III misdemeanor. So it's the lowest level misdemeanor. What we've done is, upon the third issuance of a civil citation, the next incident will be criminally cited. So they would be charged with a criminal, a misdemeanor, a low-level misdemeanor that would require a court appearance in court. So while majority of the time, that's probably just going to be a cost and fine with court, it's got a little bit more tea to it. It's a criminal citation, and it requires them to go into court. So the goal would be trying to make people take these seriously and encourage compliance with the citizens when they're in violation. Some counties do it different ways. Some do only criminal enforcement, so the first time if you're in violation, then they actually cite you with the criminal citation. What we've done here is kind of a hybrid, so it gives the opportunity to come into compliance and kind of give notice to the citizens before they have to go to court for any sort of criminal proceedings.
And on the civil citations, it was not worth our time, money, or effort to go after them simply, because it costs us more to file than it did what we would collect.
Well, and you're right to my point, and that is, have we accomplished much here? Because from my understanding is, it's three strikes and you're out, basically. On the fourth occasion or the third occasion, you would actually be issued a criminal summons. Is that correct?
Right.
So basically, three times, you can just ignore it. So I'm just asking, have we put enough meat into it?
The civil fines also have been increased as well.
Civil fines, okay. Uh, how much have the civil fines been increased?
I don't know what they were previously. I can tell you what they were now.
They didn't go up exponentially. They just went a small amount, from 25, 57, 57, 500 on certain items. So not a whole lot.
So the smallest fine is $50?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Smallest.
Is my understanding that with debt set off, you have to be $50 or more?
I couldn't tell you on that.
I'm not sure.
Yeah. My question here is, have we got the fines to where, rather than us chasing the rabbit, that we just simply send it to the state for a debt set off against income tax? Is my question.
Very good question.
Has it got to be more than $50?
I think so. My computer's off, so I'll find out.
So the first violation, the first, very first violation, and not looking at shelter fees, because we've got different fees in here, so if we have to impound, then we're going to charge a daily fee.
Sure.
The first, the first civil penalty is $100.
Okay.
For the first.
Well, I know that's what falls.
The second is $200, and then third, everyone after third and after is $500.
That's serious. That's serious.
And then that also includes the 25, 25, 57, 50 impound fees and shelter fees.
Well, it's a sad state of affairs that you've got to impose such penalties in order to get action. But if there's not some meat there, and if there's not some type of substantial fine, they ignore it. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We had stacks that we had our intern go through last year, and either they weren't property owners, or they were renters, or there was nothing really to go after. So that's the reason why we wanted to look at making it substantial.
And I think the least amount of fine, the highest fine we had was smaller than what it cost to file to try to get back.
So what kind of money were we looking at as far as not being paid?
It was not a lot of money. You know, in the big scheme of things, it's not a lot of money. But again, it was no penalty really for them for what they were doing. You know, they were just ignoring it.
In other words, it's the principal, not their money?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If you look in your agenda on page 73 and 74, and 75, it, it's actually 74 and 75, the most of it, this kind of explains to you what the changes are. $50. Okay, thank you. I thought it was.
And I do want to also thank Mel and Frank Salz and Andrew and Board as well for reviewing this, and I'm moving this forward, and I do appreciate it.
Have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Motion made. Any more discussion? No more discussion, please signify by raising your right hand.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And next on this is the DWI Task Force Grant Local Government Resolution.
Morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Earlier this year, I come to you to ask for, to be allowed to put in our application for our fourth-year grant of the DWI Task Force. That grant has, or that, the fourth-year grant has been approved. I have the letter of approval, and I'm just asking this morning that the resolution be approved and signed, so I can get that back to Governor's Highway Safety Program, and we can get our funding for the fourth year. Fourth year is 50%, 50% county, 50% federal share. The fifth year, which will be coming up in January, I'll be coming to you and asking to file that application. The fifth year is generally fully funded by the county. I have been told by Governor's Highway Safety Program that as long as we are maintaining the numbers that we are, improving our ranking within the state, that we can apply for and have a good chance of getting a 25% grant and continue that on out for several years. There are teams across the state that are in their sixth, seventh year with this program, and there, it's a 25% share. So we're looking forward to trying to do that next year. But like I said, this morning, I just asked that the resolution be approved.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I think that's your incentive for the next time you come before us.
Yes, sir.
And, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt and approve the resolution.
Motion been made with Commissioner Doughty to accept the resolution. Any more discussion?
Just thank you all for what you do.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And be careful.
Try.
If no more questions, discussion, ask for approval, signify by raising your right hand.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just to take up 30 seconds to a minute more of your time. You've seen me come in here for the last three years and talk to you and tell you about what we're doing out on the street and stuff. I wanted to introduce you to a couple of the men. There's Deputy Holland, Deputy Bligh. These are two guys on the team right now. These guys are the ones that are out on the street doing the job. These, they work tirelessly. They work weekends, they work nights, they work holidays with little to no complaints. But I just want to recognize these guys and others that have been a part of the team that have grown, gone on to bigger and better things. But I just want to recognize these guys for the hard work that they put in daily.
I might add, I don't think that Deputy Holland over there gets much lip from anybody.
You'd be surprised. The world's full of crazy people. I do like having him around. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Honeycutt, will you go with number three, please?
Yes, sir. One end of this, Al Lumpkin, who is our tax administrator. And Al, we'll present to you the calendar for the tax collection.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. This is our annual process of our tax settlement. Basically, it's a snapshot of where we ended up June 30th, the end of our fiscal year for 2017, 18 taxes. And we have good news. We did a great job. My staff has done a great job collecting these delinquent taxes, and I'll show you that as we go through our slide show. You'll notice on this slide, the big red standout is what you're looking at. The numbers mean a lot. We basically, total levy was around, close to $49 billion that we actually billed for the past year. We collected almost $48 million of that at today. The 98.10% is the highest rate that I know of that's ever been collected in Wayne County during a fiscal year. I'll check this morning. It's been a month and a half later, we're actually 98.4%. So that's very good. And again, I want to give all the credit to my staff. They did a great job. It's a tough job. It's almost as bad as a DWI person, I mean, collecting taxes. It's tough. We all know we have to pay, but sometimes we don't want to pay. And so it's a tough job getting those. So I want to give my staff a great shout-out for that, for that 98.10%. I know Allison's happy. The money's been coming in good, so. We also, not only the current year, we collect back-year taxes. This is basically showing you from 2006 to 2016, we collected roughly, almost a million dollars on back taxes. These get a little tougher. If you notice the middle column, motor vehicles, that was prior to the new law that took effect in 2013, which vehicle taxes now are collected at DMV, and you pay before you get your registration, which has been an excellent thing, and I'll show you a slide on that in just a minute. These are old taxes, used to be billed after you got your tag. So you got to get your tag, three months later, we send you a bill, and you have to pay that bill before you get your next one. The problem with that is, people are very transient. They move from county to county, from state to state, and once these are billed and they move, it's very hard to collect these taxes. So eventually, most of these will probably be written off and basically billed and collectible. After 10 years, we lose our ability to use enforced collections, which is our remedies such as garnishments, bank attachments, foreclosures, stuff like that. So once the bill gets beyond 10 years, it's pretty much, unless somebody just walks in out of the goodness of their heart and wants to pay it, then we pretty much, we'll have to write those off. And as I'm going through this, if you have any questions, please just let me know. Here's our motor vehicles. We've had a gross levy of 6.4 million. Our levy collected is 6.2 million, and the percent collected is 96.4. That's a little misleading, because the way these bill, they bill these on the last Saturday of the month. So we had a new billing that went in the end of June, on that Saturday before the 30th. And of course, none of that, very little of that was collected. So in reality, that percentage is usually around 99% collectional, which is excellent. This program is working very well, and like I said, you pay before you get your registration, which works very well. As part of our settlement, we have to show that we tried our best to collect these taxes. This shows you our enforced collections. This is after bills become delinquent. We basically do wage garnishments, we do bank attachments, we do rent attachments, and we do foreclosures. You'll see that these are a little bit less than last year, and the reason for that is we didn't work any less, but those back years are getting collected, and they're getting cleaned up, as you can see in our percent collection. So the less we have to collect, these numbers will actually go down a little bit. We do have a foreclosure. I want to also thank Andrew. Andrew's come on board about halfway through this year. Him and, he and Catherine have done an excellent job with the foreclosures. They are, they are great to work with. They work with the taxpayers, they try to get the stuff paid, and worst-case scenario, if we have to, then he will go through with the foreclosure process. So that's working out very well, and again, thank you, Andrew. As Mr. Doughty mentioned earlier, we do have a debt set off program, and we collected some money from that. The problem with our law, in our business, current-year taxes, we bill, we have, they're due by January 5th, a delinquent January 6th. For new current-year taxes that become delinquent, we have to wait 30 days before we can send a delinquent letter to them, as far as letting them know we're going to submit it to debt set. So the earliest we can do it is February 5th, February 6th, actually. Then we have to wait 30 more days before we actually send it to debt set off. So a lot of times, people already have their refunds by then, so we have to wait till the next year to get that money if it's still outstanding. So it helps, but it's not the ideal thing in our case, because of our deadlines, where we're required to submit that. Other departments, I don't think, have to do, or held to those guidelines, because they bill all during the year, so I think it works a little better in some cases. But we still get money. We got $16,000, which is very good. And that's all I have for the settlement, and this will be audited by Finance Office and Dana Lane coming up. She was getting ready to crank her audit up, I think. Any questions on our settlement? I think we do have to have a motion to accept that.
A motion to accept, and then also a motion to direct him to collect taxes for the 2018 fiscal year.
And those taxes have been billed, as Andrew mentioned, they're online. They'll be going in the mail sometime this week, so you should be receiving your tax bills, 2018 tax bills. And barring any changes, we only had two rate changes this year. There were two fire districts, which were Wayland and?
Austin.
Austin, that's correct. So we had two fire changes, but you say your tax bill should be basically what you had last year, unless you did something new, built something new, something like that. It should be pretty much the same as you saw last year.
Do you want to mention rebalance?
Let me make a motion, if I can, to accept the tax collector's settlement for the calendar year 2017, for 2017 taxes and prior years.
Yes. Motion's made. Any discussion? Any discussion, all approval, raise your right hand. Thank you.
And then we actually won?
Motion to appoint Allen as?
Number four.
Right. Motion. A motion for, to appoint, not to order him to collect taxes for this coming year, this fiscal.
I don't.
So.
Number four.
All right. Motion's been number four, motion to approve order directing tax collector to collect taxes charged in the tax register receipts for county year 2018 and all prior years outstanding taxes. So motion's made. Mr. Kamart is needing more discussion. No more discussion, please signify approval by raising your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Now.
Motion to appoint Allen.
I say moved. To appoint Mr. Allen Lumpkin as tax collector for next year. That's in form of a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Four years.
Four years. Okay. Motion's made. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. And now, Ms. Bugg will administer it.
Do you want to read this, or will you, I read it and you just?
I will say I do. We're not getting married, so.
That's okay. I state your name.
I, Allen Lumpkin.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as Wayne County Tax Assessor, so help you God.
I do.
And say, again, I state your name.
I, Allen Lumpkin.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that you will not allow your actions as Wayne County Tax Assessor to be influenced by personal or political friendships or obligations.
I do.
We have three of these.
None.
I state your name.
I, Allen Lumpkin.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as Wayne County Tax Collector, so help you God.
I do.
I state your name.
Allen Lumpkin.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that you will not allow your actions as Wayne County Tax Collector to be influenced by personal or political friendships or obligations.
I do.
I state your name.
Allen Lumpkin.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as Wayne County Tax Administrator, so help you God.
I do.
I state your name.
Allen Lumpkin.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that you will not allow your actions as Wayne County Tax Administrator to be influenced by personal or political friendships or obligations. Administrator to be influenced by personal or political friendships or obligations.
I do. Thank you very much. Thank you.
You are duly sworn, three times over.
You swore me bad, didn't you? Okay, thank you. Just a second. Mr. Chairman, as Craig mentioned, we are in the process of revaluation. That is a once every eight-year cycle that we have to do. Our last was in 2011. This goes into effect 2019. So we are diligently working on that. Just a high level, at this point, we're still working to get the numbers, but we don't see a big change coming up this time. There's not a big windfall coming. We sort of, we've been holding our own, we really have. It's going to be more of a shift. A revaluation, people tend to associate that with my tax bill's going up. That's not the reason for revaluation. It's to re-equalize the values. For instance, if commercials going up, if commercials doing really good, then we will equalize those values. Some of our upper-end homes may be coming down. Our average smaller homes are actually going up, our starter homes are something going up. So it's a re-separation of the values, to get them back where they need to be to market value. Our goal is to put 100% market value on the property. So theoretically, at revaluation year, we have tax value, market value as equal. Once we establish that value, our value for tax purposes stays the same, no matter what the market does. In the past, we've seen the market actually go down. We have tax values that actually were higher than market value, and we get a lot of calls about that. But we can't adjust our values in the interim between that revaluation, because it wouldn't be fair to adjust one person's value and not everybody's. Now, I will tell you, the state is recommending that all counties try to shorten their revaluation cycle, because the market tends to be fluctuating a lot more now than it used to. When I first came here in the early 90s, our first revow was '95. We did that. Next one was 2003. The market went up 36%, I think, in the eight-year cycle. And that was the history. Most all counties did that. You did a revow, the next month, it was like markets going up, up, up. Well, as you know, that kind of market's gone. We don't see that anymore. It's like a roller coaster now. From year to year, you never know what's going to happen. So they are pushing us to do a shorter cycle revaluation. Six years, potentially up to four years closer. So we looking out for that. They're talking about the state level. Now, some counties, the larger counties, actually do a four-year revow already. I don't know that Wayne County needs a four-year, maybe a six-year. I could probably, probably see, but I don't think a four-year. We don't see that much change here, unless the market does, you know, indicate that.
Mr. Chairman, if I might inquire, what is generally the approximate cost for a revow?
I want to say, first of all, I want to say it normally, if a smaller counties, they usually have to hire a company to do that for them. And they usually pay around $20 a parcel. We have 60-some thousand parcels, so you're looking at a million dollars if we had to hire somebody to do it. Our staff, we do it in-house. We do hire somebody for the commercial properties, because they're more specialized, and we do need some help on those. I think last time, Allison, was it less than $500,000 we spent on the revow? Which is a lot of money, don't get me wrong. But it's a lot less than what it would be if we had to hire a company to do a full-blown revow. So I would say, we'll be around 2400 or 500,000 is what we had last time. I don't see it exceeding that this time.
And the second question on that is, when would you expect property owners to be notified of their new value?
Very good question. Continuing on us completing everything, I'm looking probably sometime around February timeframe for notices to be sent out.
I'm just wondering when my phone is going to start ringing.
Everybody will receive a notice, and on that notice, it tells all about, you know, if you feel like this value is not correct, or we missed something, you can appeal that value. And we go through the appeal process all during next spring. They'll have a chance to come talk to us. If they don't, we're not satisfied, they can come talk to you. If you don't satisfy them, they go to the state. So there's, there's an appeal process that they can go through. But most cases, if it's a legitimate problem, like, we can't get into every house. We obviously don't go in people's homes. And sometimes the outside may look okay, but they have some damage inside that we don't know about. They might have some permanent flooding damage that we didn't see. So that's the time during that appeal process, they come and let us know during that informal appeal process. And we, we'll go take a look at it, look at the inside of the property, and we may make adjustments accordingly. Thank you, sir.
And I do want to thank Alan for the work that he has set up. 98.1% at this time is usually what people have prior years. And to do it in a current year is pretty incredible. So hats off that one, Mr. Set.
Thank you, sir.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Our potential property is, you sustained hurricane damage, and there was no, there was nothing, there was no insurance or did not qualify for hurricane relief, yada, yada, yada. And that property was not productive for some period of time during the calendar year. Is there relief or taxes on it?
We did do that, yes, sir. In fact, Steve ran an article in the paper the other day about that very thing. What we did, my staff, the hurricane was in October 2016. January 1st is our, that's our day for everything. Whatever you own January 1st is what you pay taxes on, whatever's sitting there. So my staff went out, the end of 2016, we looked at all the flooded properties. If it was flooded, not repaired as of January 1st, they all got adjustments. And some of them we missed, people came in later on, we've adjusted those to the ones we know about. Go through the calendar year 2017. Like you said, they're still sitting there. Nothing's been done. January 1, 2018, we went out toward the end of the year of 17, looked at all those same properties, we had them flagged. If they were not repaired, they keep the same adjustment. The value of tax values were adjusted down. Most of them are land-only with a minimal house value, depending on how much flooding they had on the property. And then hopefully, some of these will be in the buyout process. They'll be bought out during, hopefully, this year, early next year, maybe, we hope. But again, as long as they're not repaired, we can keep the value adjusted. Now, some people had some minor damage, I call like ductwork under the house, stuff like that. A lot of those were repaired prior to January 1st of 17. They got, they did not get an adjustment.
So if Hurricane Matthews, October 8th and 9th of 2016...
16, yes, sir.
And the actual damage and repairs were done in 17?
Mm-hmm. They would have got an adjustment for 17 taxes, and it'd be put back like it was for 18, like it was prior to the flood. And again, if they were not adjusted, not repaired as of 1118, the adjustment stays on it.
If it was not repaired as of...
1118, January 1st. The adjustment stays on it for 18 taxes also. They'll get the same discount they got for 17, if it was not repaired. If it was repaired as of January 1st, it goes back to pre-flood value, whatever it was before, unless they added on or did something, did some changes to the property. If they just repaired it, it goes back to the same value it was prior to the flood.
Yes, sir. So it's possible that, since we have to use by, and I think I'm correct, because we've talked about this before, the revow, you have to use the year previous comparables.
We use sales leading up to our revow, yes, sir. So we're using...
We're using 2017 comparables, right?
We're using late 17 and 18, yes, sir.
Okay. Up to some...
As late as we can go.
As late as you can go.
At least December in some cases.
I think that's important. But it could be that a flooded property that had a decrease in their value, depending on when we do a revow, that may not be correct. In other words, if we do, if we do a revow and it was in good shape, for example, and then a flood hits and we reduce it, but we go back a year for the revow, how does that work on flooded properties?
When you, when we say we go back, that's just for sales only. We're looking at current sales to try to establish a market value. It's not looking at the actual property as far as the condition. It's looking, we're just looking for sales.
I got it.
Current sales, just like a fear pressure will for the bank. They're looking for three or four comparables to properties. And what we have to do, we canvass neighborhoods. We look for sales, most recent sales, usually 12 to 18 months, to try to establish what that subdivision's doing. So when we, when we say we go back to get those data, it's just for sales only. It's not looking at condition or anything like that.
I see. I see. Looks like most of the, they're talking about the time between revows for different counties. That's not as important, the way I see it, as the actual, the actual value of the property and what real estate's doing at that particular year that you're in. Because the last revow, if you remember, our comparables were up, and the year that we were living in, they were down. And that's why we got all those phone calls, Commissioner Daughery, is because of the time that we took the revow. So the amount of times you take it is not as important as when you take it.
Right. I guess, I guess what they're talking about on state level is at least, you can, you can correct that fluctuation quicker than you, instead of waiting a year.
Supposedly.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Daughery, now we will let you brief us on number six, a resolution.
Yes, sir. We do have a walk on to our agenda. Thanks. It's resolution authorizing Withers and Ravenel. Withers and Ravenel is a company that we hired to do the site assessment for the Bryan property, which is now the Goldsboro Industrial Campus. Part of their agreement with us and part of their consulting work was to submit a grant to the rural site readiness, which will help with the infrastructure and the entrance and the design work and the water and sewer to that site, so we basically can take a raw piece of land and hopefully make it ready for industrial recruitment. So they applied for the grant with Rural Center and, or the Rural Right, Rural Ready Sites Grant for $1.785 million. And this is part of the process, is to approve this resolution to move forward.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I got a motion that we approve the resolution authorizing Withers Ravenel to complete the final grant application for the $1.785 Rural Ready Sites Grant.
Can we create an acronym for that name?
No. When everybody got to spitting it out.
Repeat that, please.
Okay. Your heard Commissioner Daughery's motion. Is in discussion. If not, please signify approval, raise your right hand. Thank you. Now, to comments time.
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of updates, and again, as mentioned before, Mark Pope, our new economic developer for Wayne County is on board. Mark started yesterday, and we're excited about Mark. Again, want to thank Tiffany for the work that she's done. And the other thing I did want to mention is, we are moving forward with respect to the airport manager's position. I also want to thank our newly formed Airport Commission and their help in going through the applications and interview process. I do want to publicly make a note as well. But I also want to mention that this is the week of the North Carolina Association and County Commissioners Meeting, which will be in Hickory, and that there will be a few of us there at that meeting through Wednesday through Saturday. And that's all I have at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Mayor.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. The comment on the August 18th, 2018, the animal control facility held a, participated in a national clear the shelter event, and this event was resulted in the adoption of 76 animals out of the shelter on Saturday. It was staff by staff and volunteers. And they had vendors on hand from Pet Supplies Plus, Pet Smart, Eli's Friends, as well as the Wayne County Animal Adoption Advocates and the Wayne County Humane Society. Texas Roadhouse supplied all volunteers and staff with lunch, and also gave free appetizer coupons to all adopters. It was a huge success, and I'd like to give a shout out to that department for the work they did, and a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mayor.
Thank you. I had on a couple of meetings, made a, actually, a phone conference with the N.C. East Alliance out of Greenville. There's, there's a lot of contacts going on, there's a lot happening as far as the number of projects. Our board at the N.C. East Alliance has increased significantly because of addition of 15 to 20 counties in the north, the northeast quadrant of North Carolina. So with John Chaffee leaving, we're sort of in the middle of trying to get someone picked as a leader. Also, met, we had a meeting of the Library Board, which I'm on, and the changes that are happening in our library across the county are just moving forward. But I always get asked the question, Mayor Flowers, whenever I go to a Library Board meeting, we need a, we need a central library in northern part of Wayne County. So just to throw that out. Just as a, just as a comment, thank you, Mayor Flowers, for coming and with your comments this morning. I want to remind everyone, and you hit the nail on the head, is that, and also some others have mentioned this, that we, we and the school board need to do what's best for all citizens of Wayne County. I want to remind everyone that the northern part of Wayne County, as we just discussed a few hours ago, that the Fremont Stars School Building was built in 1923, 1927 timeframe. So when you say, oh my gosh, our building is 60, 70 years old, that's fine. Just remember, the Fremont Stars School Building, 1923, I believe. Is that right, Mayor? Okay. Thank you for listening to that. We need to keep everyone in the county in mind. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Kamori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I would like to thank my colleagues and constituencies from the southern part of the county for the comments that they came up, took the time out of their day, come up and speak to this board about the needs reflective of Southern Wayne High School. Thank you, this cute little badge you made there, Mr. Mayor. And I am so much in agreement with what Mr. Mayor said, that we need to do things for all of the county. And I took the opportunity to remind my colleagues today that since Southern Wayne had any real activity done, northeast and northwest schools were built, Spring Creek and Grantham was built, mobile units were put in different places. We built a jail, a Maxwell Center, a lot of other things, because we're moving this county forward. We believe in pushing the whole county forward together. There's also a word called prioritizing, and it has to do with your turn. When Grantham was built, I said to the Grantham community that I thought they had been patient and had waited their turn. If there's anything called my turn, our turn, we want to advocate in the strongest measure possible for the things that need to be done at Southern Wayne High School. And now, for the large public in Southern Wayne, I have heard different options, but all of them go back to the fact that whatever the outcome is, if outcome is a positive one for Southern Wayne High School. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Daughery.
I'm sitting here trying to collect my thoughts and see how I want to present this. I agree that Southern Wayne has definitely been promised a gymnasium similar to other projects. And it is definitely been put off for many, many years. But I see here at estimates in regards to the gem of $5.53 million for six classrooms. You're talking about $8.5 million investment. I think it's time that we kind of look at, what, are we investing in an area, how long is that investment going to take us out? How many years? I think we need to have some serious conversations with our school board, and we need to have some joint meetings and sit down and see what really our priorities are and where we're going to come up with the dollars. And that's key here, because we're going to, if we are going to spend those type of dollars, we got to pay it back. We hear that the legislature, as an example, has got a program available for Tier 1 and Tier 2 counties that allows school projects and construction projects to come about where there's a dollar-for-dollar match. I think for certain...
there's a dollar-for-dollar match. I think for certain criteria, it's almost a grant. But then you read the fine print. Don't believe what you hear necessarily. You better read the fine print. The fine print is, if you use those dollars, you use your lottery dollars. Well, we've already committed the lottery dollars going forward to pay for the new schools that we have built. So we can't go that route. It basically is, the county's going to have to stand on its own. We're going to have to borrow the money. It's going to have to come from us. And there's only one revenue source, and that's taxes. So we're going to have to have a serious conversation of how we're going to pay it back. We're going to do the improvements. Need them, no doubt about it. But if we're going to do them, how are we going to finance it? And how are we going to be financing in a way that's fair to everybody? So it's, it's, it's not an easy question to answer, but we do need to have some serious conversation to find the answer. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Acock.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Last Friday, I had the pleasure with, along with Mr. Gurley, going down to Seven Springs for the groundbreaking of their new fire station, which is long overdue. They've endured flooding at Seven Springs, just like everyone else in that small community. This is going to be a great asset to that community. Not only is it going to serve as a fire station, but it also, that being a new building and the size, it's going to be, be an asset to the community for functions and other things, other than just the fire department. Very proud of those folks down there for, for what they're doing, because like I said, they've been, they've been flooded several times now. Also attended a meeting yesterday in Fremont on the sewer issue with Fremont, Eureka, and Goldsboro was already also in the equation. The report that we got back really wasn't what we wanted to hear, but we kind of figured that, but you know, our great fearless leaders in Raleigh said the study had to be done, so it was done. But it was, that's another issue that we're going to be facing, or Fremont and Eureka's going to be facing. But at least we're working on the problem. Also, I hear the different commissioners mention their district. I don't have a district. The whole county's mine. The citizens of Wayne County put me in this position, so I got to be accountable to everyone. And everything that has been said about schools, not only Southern Wayne, but schools in other parts of the county, it's all justable. But our school, our school buildings and all didn't, did not get in the shape that they're in overnight. And we just don't have a blank check to correct all of it at one time. And we got to prioritize. And I'm certainly not saying that Southern Wayne's not the priority. But also, there's other projects in the, in the school system that's got to be a priority. I was almost ashamed to go into middle school at Rosewood, and that school was also built in the same timeframe as Fremont, in the 20s. I think there was a school bond back then that built a lot of schools, like probably Rosewood, some in the southern end, Fremont, Golden Hana School, Eureka. I mean, there was a lot done with the bond money back in the 20s. But I just don't want to completely neglect some of the other needs and for, for some projects. My, my concern is, is classrooms to educate the children. I'm not saying the other facilities are not necessary, because they are. But we just, we've got to have more input from the school system, and you know, they, we get figures that we rely on to fund what we can. And it seems like all of a sudden, the figure starts changing in the, in the, in the middle of the year. And we've got to start putting more emphasis on, let us know what we need, when we're doing our budget. When we're, when we're working on the budget, if there's a need that we see is greater than what maybe the commissioners thinks, and they can show to us that the needs are, there's always other projects that we make him move back a year, or cut a little bit or whatever, to make that happen. But this time of the year, it's very difficult for us to be moving money away around, other than coming out of fund balance. And we've hit our fund balance pretty hard in the last few years. And we've got to be careful on how we're spending our money. And it's true, material is going up. In fact, interest rates are going up, and that's going to play into it. But we've just got to be real careful on how we move forward with these projects. I'm not saying that the projects are not needed, but we just got to be careful on how we're spending our money, because we can't keep hitting our fund balance like we have for the last few years without a tax increase. And you know, if, if, if we can get the sales tax passed, we've already passed a resolution that is earmarked for education, for the public school system, and for Wayne Community College. So if the sales tax passes, we know where it's going. I mean, we've, we've committed to that. But if it doesn't pass, I would look out for a property tax increase, because the money's got to come from somewhere. We don't have a printing press. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Bell.
All of my committees that I serve on takes off June and July and August. Unfortunate.
What committees are those?
Well, someone else make that decision. I did attend Representative Larry Bell's retirement ceremony Saturday night. He wanted me to pass on to the board and to the citizens of Wayne County. He really enjoyed working for this county. And he made a profound statement that he never had one problem with one citizen or any of the leadership in Wayne County during his 18 years. I think that speaks well of somebody. Maybe he didn't do nothing. No, no, I can't. No, he did, he did quite a bit. He was on so many committees, and he wanted me just to pass on to this board, that he enjoyed working with you and, and the legislative branch of our representative from this county. And that if he can be of any service, even after his retirement, to give him a call, he'll still work with our legislators, especially his buddy, John Bell. And that is it.
Thank you. I'll close.
One other thing.
Yes, sir.
I don't live in southern part of Wayne County, but I've got so many phone calls about the Southern Wayne Gym and all the financial situation down there, and the buildings, and the classrooms, and all that kind of stuff. And so I hope that we can solve that problem, because, as I said, I don't live in southern part of the county, but I do get all these calls from, I think JD set me up on that. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Bell. As Commissioner Acock mentioned earlier, I attended the groundbreaking for Seven Springs Volunteer Fire Department as well. And they've been very patient over the course of a couple of years now, or more like 20 years since Hurricane Floyd and before. They've been very fortunate, get some good funding sources, as Golden Leaf for one, for example. It was very well-tened. Sheriff Pierce was there with us, and Chip Crump was with us, Mayo and Bryan was there, Dixon, Representative Bell was there. But the one comment, I want to make a remarkable comment, is that Seven Springs Fire Department, their district, 40% of our problems is in Lenore County. Have a huge, huge part in another county that's, you don't see often. But they have a great support from Lenore County. And Lenore County appreciates them and supports Seven Springs Fire Department. It was very evident last Friday, when Commissioner McDoddy was there, and their OIS Director Roger Dale and Assistant Director Jerry King was there, it's very evident that their support for Seven Springs, Wayne County, and their respect. And for all the people who came out for public comments today, we appreciate it. We appreciate the input. You know, it's hard to talk and touch everybody out in the county, so coming to us and speaking, it certainly helps us. Appreciate it. Now, Mr. Parker, we were to go in closed session?
Yes, sir, for the same reason that you went in this morning.
Do I have a motion? So move, all favor, raise your right hand, for the closed session.